At five o'clock, we'll call the council meeting to order, closed session. The city council, city of Rialto, acting successor agency to the redevelopment agency, the Rialto Utilities Authority and the Rialto Housing Authority will now come to order under closed session. Will the secretary call the roll?
Mayor Baca.
President.
Mayor Protem Scott.
Present.
Councilmember Andy Caracelis.
Present.
Councilmember Carla Perez.
Present.
Councilmember Edward Montoya.
Present.
City Attorney Eric Vell.
Present.
City Manager Tanya Williams.
Present.
And Mayor and Mayor Protem Council, I need to let the record reflect that our city treasurer will not be present for the entire meeting.
Right.
And I'll make the announcement at the open of the open meeting.
Right. He indicated that the reason he couldn't make it because he had an emergency, so it should be recorded as an emergency that he had to go to Washington State, so that's the reason he couldn't be here.
Okay, thank you.
With that, I'll call on the city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. We have four items on your closed session agenda for this evening. The first is a conference with legal counsel regarding two items of existing litigation. Those cases are spelled out in the agenda. We have a conference with legal counsel with regard to one item of anticipated litigation. This is an industrial disability retirement item. Your third item is a conference with your labor negotiators. And then finally, you have a public employment performance evaluation of the position city manager. And that's it for this evening.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the audience that would like to address any of the issues that would be going on into closed session? Seeing that there's no one in the audience that would like to address that, so at this point, do we have a motion to go into closed session?
So.
Motion's been made by Andy Caracelis, seconded by Carla Perez. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If the motion carries, we'll move on to closed session. Meeting will come to order. This time, the city council will come to order. The city council, city of Rialto, the acting successor agency to the redevelopment agency, the Rialto Utilities Authority, the Rialto Housing Authority will now be in session. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Baca.
Present.
Mayor Protem Ed Scott.
Present.
Councilmember Andy Caracelis.
Present.
Councilmember Carla Perez.
Present.
Councilmember Edward Montoya Jr.
Present.
City Manager Tanya Williams.
Present.
City Attorney Eric Vell.
Present.
And as I stated in the closed session part, that the city treasurer will be absent had any emergency excuse, absent for this entire meeting.
Thank you. All members present, so at this time, we'll move on to the pledge of allegiance that will be led by Carla Perez.
Phil, please stand. Put your right hand over your heart. Begin.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where Christian stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our law.
If you could remain standing, Pastor Peter Uyola, the New Destiny Christian Church will give the invocation.
Over here?
Yes.
Yes, please.
And turn the little green light on.
Thank you so much. I just want to say what a blessing and what a privilege and honor it is to open up in sessions for the city council of Rialto. Joe Baca, I met you at the car show. We were passing out flyers and he gave us the opportunity to come out and be able to just open up in prayer. So I just want to share, first of all, I just want to say thank you. I'm Pastor Peter Uyola from New Destiny Rialto, and it is an honor and a privilege to do this today. But I do want to share a scripture before we pray. In First Timothy, it tells us, "I urge you, then, first of all, that petitions, prayers, intercessions, and thanksgiving be made for all people, for kings and all those in authority, that we may live peacefully and quiet lives in awe godliness and holiness. This is good and pleases God and our Savior, who wants all people to be saved and to come to the knowledge of the truth." And if you guys will bow your heads as I pray, so we could open up, dear God, we are grateful for this city of Rialto and for the opportunity to serve it. Thank you for blessing us with life, health, and the freedom to participate in our community. We ask for your wisdom, guidance, and our mayor Joe Baca and the council members to make important decisions. Help them to work together in harmony, to listen to one another, and to act with a keen sense of justice for all citizens. Bless their families and give them strength for the task ahead. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you. You can be seated now. So at this time, I'll call on the city attorney to report on closed session.
Thank you, Mayor. There were four items on your closed session agenda this evening. Those items are listed on the agenda. Council went through all of those. They had a briefing from both city attorney and staff as appropriate for each item, and there was no reportable action. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, then, we'll move on to presentations and proclamations. That we have one memorial being done by Mayor Protem Ed Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to read that at my seat tonight as former council member Lynn Hertz will not be here tonight to accept this, but we will get it to her later. This is in memoriam of her husband, Daniel Eric Hertz. We all knew him as Dan Hertz. October 26, 1943 to November 4, 2025. Born in Lenox, California, to Joseph and Mary Ryan Hertz. He has three siblings, Dennis, Cindy, and Mary Jo. In school, he was drawn to mechanical and creative projects. He received third place and second place national awards for his design and building of a steam engine. He was awarded a full scholarship to Cool Leonard Art College. However, he had already enlisted in the United States Navy, where he served on the USS Montecito as a machinist. He met his wife Lynn Brosnahan, a former Rialto city council member, from 1992 to 1996 and 2013 to 2014, behind Ned's Landrum at in June 1966, and were married in 1970 in a sister-ancient mission. In 1971, Dan fulfilled another dream of opening a small engine shop known as Dan's Lawnmower Center in Rialto. Surviving ups and downs and many changes, it is still open and thriving, a Rialto Avenue, at Rialto Avenue and Cactus for 54 years. Dan was active in the community, particularly Lion's Breakfast Club, 55-plus years, Rialto Elk's Lodge, 50 years, Friends of Rialto Canines, Chamber of Commerce, Rialto Historical Society. He supported many youth sports. Dan was an avid Harley rider and made many memorable trips on the bike, along with many fishing trips and cruises. Dan is survived by his wife Lynn of 55 years, his daughter and her husband, Joanne, and Russ Murray, granddaughter Desiree and her husband, Justin, great-granddaughters Mikey, Paris Lee, Harper, Gina, David, McKinsey, and Cassidy, all girls, grans and grates, his sister Mary Jo and her companion Vanna, his sister Cindy and her husband Steve, aka Hippie, his brother Dennis and his wife Debbie, Donald Hertz, Dana Hertz, Blanchard Kelly Brosnahan Reeves, plus two indoor cats, Casper and Ziva. I think everybody in this community knows Dan's Lawnmower Shop. I've known him for 35 years, and he was a great guy, as is his wife. People that have been very active in our community, so we're going to sorely miss Dan Hertz. Tonight with this memoriam is also a certificate from county supervisor Joe Baca Jr. honoring the life and times of Daniel E. Hertz. We will get this to Lynn, and may God bless her and Dan is certainly in our memories from this community. And I think all of us have probably been to that lawnmower shop. I know I still have an electric lawnmower. I think the very first one they ever sold, I bought about 20 years ago. So, a true friend and a great guy. May rest in peace.
Thank you very much, Mayor Protem Ed Scott. But hopefully, we can adjourn in memory, in memory of Dan Hertz. I got to know the Hertz family during my political years in office at a variety of different positions, worked closely with Lynn Hertz. And then, of course, Dan was also an active member of Post 422, which is just right down the street on Lilac, was quite active and attended many of the activities that were there. He truly will be missed. And his wife Lynn Hertz has been very instrumental in the city of Rialto, not only as supporting Dan, but also a lot with the women's club too as well in the city of Rialto. So I just want to wish condolences to all of the family as we adjourn today in memory of Dan Hertz. Thank you. Next, we have a certificate for Isa Ezek Avila. It'll be presented by Andy Caracelis. And this is in behalf of the whole council.[908.57][908.57](Applause)
Also Bobby Ross Avila as well. We have certificates for both. So, as many of you may know already, these are the Avila Brothers, the four-time award-winning Avila Brothers. Applause to that. Come on now.[935.63][935.63](Applause) Anyhow, so on behalf of the city of Rialto, I have two certificates here of recognition to the Avila Brothers. In recognition of your fourth Grammy Award-winning as musicians, songwriters, and producers, your extraordinary talent, dedication, and artistic excellence have made an outstanding impact on the world of music. Your continued success serves as an inspiration for creators everywhere. With great admiration and recognition of your contributions to the art of songwriting, the city of Rialto, along with members of the community, commend you for this accomplishment and extend our sincerest congratulations.[985.25][985.25](Applause) And I just want to share a few words. So not only are these gentlemen, these fine gentlemen, a product of Rialto, they are actually giving back to the community. A lot of times, you have, whether it's a successful business owner, or a celebrity, or any kind of success level that happens in individuals, it's always important to see which ones come back to their community and give back to the community. And not only are the Avila Brothers starting to work on a local level with some of their mentoring and a lot of the programs that they're bringing on, but we're also looking here in the city of Rialto to help them develop and mentor some of our youth. So to me, that's such a great thing that we have these successful musicians and great people that are giving back to the community and that they, most importantly, that they are Rialto grown. And I will, I will, I will let them speak because I, looking at their bio, they've done so much, I would probably be up here an hour, but I'm sure they have a way of summarizing it. So I'll give them the mic and we'll let them speak. And also, we have a certificate of recognition from the county supervisor, and I'll let Mr. Baca take over.
Take over.[1081.13][1081.13](Laughter) Thank you. Thank you very much. We also have a certificate. I'd like to also mention before we do, Ezek really has been very instrumental in motivating a lot of our youth. He's a graduate from Eisenhower High in the area, so coming to school.[1099.65][1099.65](Laughter) Coming to school here and being a role model is very positive for many individuals that would like to move into the music industry. And I think, as our council member indicated, is that we're looking forward to working something close at the playhouse where we can actually establish some kind of a entertainment musical for a lot of our youth that are interested in getting into this fine art. But in behalf of the city, in behalf of the county supervisor Joe Baca Jr., the 5th District, it says, "On behalf of Vice Chair and Supervisor Joe Baca Jr. of the 5th District, the County of San Bernardino, it gives me great pleasure to join the city of Rialto in recognizing you for your remarkable contributions and accomplishments made to music industry. Your tireless efforts and dedication to excellence are truly commendable and serve as an inspiration to all around you. Take strong pride in this honorable achievement." Congratulations, Supervisor Joe Baca Jr.[1163.42][1163.42](Applause)
Go ahead. And I think we'll put them down, so I know you have a few things to... I'm going to hold mine, man.
All right.
There we go. There we go.
Hold yours. It's cool?
Yeah.
I'm just going to say...[1189.15][1189.15](Lipsmack) Let it go.[1197.58][1197.58](Applause) This shit is real. This shit is real. You know, I believe that God gives us trouble, and it brings out the worst in us so that he can reveal the best of us. You know, dreams are very expensive. And I think, all you guys, this took a lot of time to put together, and time isn't a precious commodity that we have in life. We can make money, we can never get time back. And no one does it by themselves. I've had so much help, and it's only right that we give back. We pour back into the communities, these kids here in the streets, letting them see that they can pick up an instrument versus a gun, showing them a different way, and showing them never to be afraid to make mistakes. That's how we learn, right? You don't learn diddly squat by winning. You learn when you lose. And this is just a proof that that does exist. Again, you know, we have, you know, all-stars back here, people who've poured into us, have an incredible mom, a dad who had a dream, poured into us. This for me is important for my kids. This is going to allow me to let them see me be the dad who they think I am. And that's who I need to try to continue to be. And this is a legacy that I leave for my kids. You know, I realized, I'll say this to the end, after getting the awards and working with all of my heroes, I became their hero, strangely enough. And I have so many, so many of my heroes that I talk to every single day. And, you know, as a little kid, I would see them on videos and TV and on the award shows. And to be able to bless, to be able to call them my friends and my family is an amazing accomplishment. But I realized after, you know, getting these awards and the accolades, the true reward for me was I'm in love with music.[1373.11][1373.11](Sniffing) Music is the most divine language that we have. It puts blacks, whites, Asians, it puts people, it puts humanity together. It connects us all. You got two Mexican boys, Gigano, straight up, from Rialto. That's produced for them. Biggest black artist.[1405.01][1405.01](Applause) And, you know, I think we're a better world when blacks, whites, browns, we all can get along and create some magic that surpasses. I mean, our music has gone throughout the world, and we started here in Rialto. And again, I'm thankful for the recognition. Again, it's for me, it's for my kids. And ultimately, you know, God gave me a job to do. And it's not for me to have the cars, it's not for me to have the houses. It's really for me to give the gift back to the world and do exactly what God has done for me, and he's given me a gift. And my gift is supposed to be to use to give to others. So I'm thankful, and I appreciate this so much.[1457.33][1457.33](Applause)
So I'm just going to start by saying, Andy, I'm still waiting on that fire manut o spot, you promised me.
Yes.[1470.33][1470.33](Laughter)
Thank you all for putting this together for us tonight. It means the world. Mom, we did something right. Pops, we carried the torch. You know, I've been on a serious footpath of just trying to get in a room where I know I can make a difference, where I can look at kids that look like me and give them a sense of hope, a spark, a sense of inspiration. And when we finished...[1507.46][1507.46](pause) When we finished Super Bowl last year, my mom said, "You got to figure out how to And I started my January hit-the-ground-running. I came to Rialto. I linked up with my partner, Mike.
Yeah.
He brought me to Fontana. And I started to find myself in as many classrooms as I could find myself. Allowing these kids to see that somebody's showing up for them that looks like them. Somebody that can spark a fire, somebody that can offer them something exciting, all through music. And what I've learned in these rooms is that very few adults use the word imagination. Very few adults say that word to our kids. And the truth is, is that none of this happens without imagination.
Right.
Being able to think and dream beyond your parameters and the walls that you think surround you. I would have never thought I would hear my music in Australia. I would have never thought me and my brother would be the only two Mexicans to have five Grammys in black music. You know what allows that to happen? Your ability to imagine, your ability to create and use the gift that your creator gave you. And so, it's been my goal and my passion to not just come back to Rialto and wave my accolades. It's my goal to come back here and make sure that I show up, make sure that I give them something that motivates them to want to show up to school, to want to be somebody, to touch me, feel me, know that I'm real, and that I'm here for them. And that's the beautiful thing about mine and my brother's commitment to our passion and our dream of being the best we could be. We paid a price. I can tell you how many sacrifices we've had to endure, how many birthdays and holidays we missed because we were just that focused. And so, today, when I look at these accolades, what it symbolizes is belief, our imagination, the heroes, the people that we've had throughout our lives to support us and believe in us and champion us. And, you know, I think the beauty is that we are now living proof that there are no barriers. It's just how hard you want to work and what you're willing to commit to and sacrifice. And thankfully, thankfully, our fathers and our mothers are still here. To see that, they weren't crazy in the 80s, when everybody was telling my dad, "Man, you're crazy, man." But here we are, you know, standing next to the mayor, standing next to Andy, you know?
Cool guy.
Yeah. And I got my peeps here, I got C4 here, I got Noah here, I got Mike here, I got Chris here, I got my sons here, I got my primo here on the camera. Like, you know, like, to be able to do something, the people you come up with, and they're still here to see it, you know? So, we're extremely thankful, we're extremely proud, but we're proud with a sense of humbleness and understanding from day one that our gift was always truly meant to give away. And that is our commitment, that is the chapter we are in in our lives. We're in the chapter of giving it back. So, to be here in Rialto tonight means the road for us, because this is truly where we came from. 772 Lorraine Place, Rialto.[1770.01][1770.01](Applause)
Next, we'll be moving into oral communications before I call on the next individual that'll give a report on oral communications. We're all devastated with what happened at the Vista View Apartments, you know, to all the families, all the individuals. City of Rialto has been very much concerned with what happened to them and are looking forward in terms of coordinating additional efforts to hopefully that if something like this happens, that we're prepared to help anyone, whether it's an earthquake, whether it's a fire, or whether it's any other kind of disaster. And I want to compliment both the police department and the fire department for their immediate response during that time where many of the individuals were, like anything else, lost in terms of what do they do? I've been in that situation when 9/11 happened in Washington DC where there was not a plan in place or a shelter in place, and we were all scrambling. I think Rialto wants to make sure that people in the city of Rialto know exactly what to do if we ever have any kind of disaster in the future. And with that, I'd like to call on Chris Jensen, our acting fire chief, to briefly brief us in terms of what we've done and what we could do in the future as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Protem and the city council. Thank you for the opportunity to update you just briefly on this significant fire event that we had on Friday evening. The fire involved a two-story, 16-unit apartment complex that housed approximately 75 people, both adults and children. The fire spread rapidly upon our arrival due to high winds and the location of the fire at the building. Evacuations were initiated upon arrival by the Rialto Police Department and local residents at the apartment complex. This undoubtedly saved people's lives and injuries at that incident. The fire was contained approximately 2 hours and 54 minutes into the incident, and we were supported by multiple agencies in and around this area, including San Bernardino County Fire, Colton, the City of Ontario, Loma Linda, San Manuel, and Rancho Cucamonga. Once the fire, we recognized the significance of the fire and those that had been impacted, we immediately summoned Red Cross to the scene as a partner in our emergency response framework. Once Red Cross arrived at the scene, they realized the number of folks that were in need of support from the incident and set up an immediate care and reception center at the leasing office at the Vista View Apartments. It was then determined that we needed to open a shelter for the residents that had been impacted, and that was then moved to Simpson Elementary School as part of the Rialto Unified School District and Red Cross agreement. We were also supported then by non-governmental organizations that helped and assisted with donations, as well as a significant outpouring of community members. This fire was undoubtedly extremely dangerous, resulted in significant impact to the residents and to the immediate area. And the fire department and Rialto Police Department worked diligently and continue to work with the residents and the supporting groups such as Red Cross in continuing to provide support to the residents. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I believe that we cannot ask questions at this point, right? Or can we? Attorney?
You can ask questions of the...
Okay, comments? Mayor Protem, Ed Scott?
Yeah, Chief, I just want to commend you, your fire department, the men and women of Rialto Fire Department, Rialto Police Department, and the surrounding agencies that gave you support. I think you did a tremendous job out there in light of the winds, and, you know, that's a fairly old structure. We're very lucky that we had no injuries, no casualties, and that it's just strictly limited to loss of property. And I know how traumatic that is for the residents of that complex, but we thank God that they were all okay. So again, I want to thank you for the tremendous job you've done. I want to thank the community for the tremendous outpouring of help and assistance that they have provided. It's really nice to see a community come together when a tragedy like this happens.
Thank you. Any other comments? Andy?
Thank you. Yes, I too want to thank our fire department and also the collaboration of our police department because you guys were both working hand in hand, using what resources you had, and getting everything under control. But I also want to thank all the other organizations that came out and helped, all the people that were concerned about what was going on and started establishing funds. We had everything, or Chief Jensen had everything under control with the Red Cross and everything, but everybody, when things like this happen, everybody goes into help mode. And I'm just very grateful that this community came together and that luckily there was no loss of life and that you guys acted in accordance to all your training, along with our police department. And I'm just very grateful to have such a great team. And I also want to thank our police chief for all the involvement and the great sync and coordination that we had on this effort. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? Hearing none again, thank you very much, Chris, you and the fire department, the police department, and the community and everyone for coming together and addressing this issue that will continue to be in our minds and looking at ways that we can make sure we can avoid such incidents. You didn't mention one thing, but I thought it was very important too and very touching, how you saved, the fire department saved the life of a baby too as well. I mean, want to highlight a little bit about what happened there? That was very, to me, a very touching moment because of what happened.
If it's okay, I'll do that for me.
Sure.
Yes, there was a family that had attempted to re-enter the structure after, we had warned them how dangerous it really was. And in fact, they did enter. They got in about three to five feet. And they heard the floor suddenly collapse in one of the rooms, just from building vibration and different movements that happened. We knew it was extremely dangerous, but it's important to understand why they were attempting to do that. And they were trying to recover the ashes of their child. And so when I heard that, I immediately summoned an engine crew back to the scene. We got into our protective clothing and we made access into the structure and recovered that little boy for the mom and the dad.
Thank you. With that, hearing none, hearing no other comments, we'll move into oral communications. And I'd like to state if there's, I know that there's quite a few people that would like to address or make comments. If someone is making a comment already that has already been said, if you can just either state something a little bit different or state that you support whatever comment someone else has said, so this way we can have everybody address or those addressing the issue itself under oral communications. Okay? Thank you. With that, are there any ones that have signed up for oral communications?
Yes, we have several people from the Vista Fire.
Vista Fire?
No, we have Donna Monharas. Want to thank the police department. Are they here?
Yeah.
Then we have Steve Figueroa and Frank Montes. And then everybody else we have wants to speak on the fire.
Good evening. My name is Donna Monharas, and I would like to express my sincere appreciation for Officer Dion Gary and the amazing service provided in patrolling and addressing speeding drivers in our neighborhood near Valley Boulevard in Spruce. Officer Dion Gary's car stop shows Rialto Police is present and responsive to keeping the area safe. His willingness to take enforcement action, especially during a cold weekend, when others are home with family members, means a lot to the residents who worry daily about reckless drivers speeding in our neighborhood. It's been a growing concern. Officer Dion professionalism and care brings a sense of safety and comfort. His work and that of Rialto Police Department truly make a difference to our community. And today, we thank Rialto PD and Officer Dion. And also want to thank the Chief Jensen for his great work with the fire that happened in Rialto. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. Steve Figueroa with the Hispanic Coalition for Small Businesses. And we too want to thank you that out of a tragedy, good people came out, not just in law enforcement, but community organizations. And my buddy Frankie, we help out a lot, but Frankie spearheaded this. But what we found in a lot of cities, it's so clickish, they don't allow organizations to come in and just help. And your city has been wide open. That should be part of your plan to coordinate all the organizations who can bring food and tents and money or whatever. But just want to thank you for the openness. As we saw earlier, there's a lot of good things here in Rialto, a lot of good people. And just want to thank you for the efforts that you made. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, city council, members of the community. My name is Frank Pontes, and I represent the Hispanic Coalition of Small Businesses. It's been a very challenging past five days for all of us, but especially the victims of the fire that have shown strength and resilience and hope. They're also true champions for showing us resilience. But Chief Jensen, thank you for the empathy, the love that you showed for this community. I was there and I saw you, and that's what they needed at that moment, and you stepped up. So I want to thank you. Thank you very much. Chief, thank you. I've heard great things of you protecting the structures, getting everybody out. Muchas gracias. Mr. Ed Scott, thank you for being there. Thank you for your support, constant communications that we had. It was great. Councilman Montoya, thank you for being there. Thank you for spending the time with those members of the community. It meant a lot to them. So I want to thank you from the bottom of hearts. Congressman Baca, thank you for helping us secure the location for the Thanksgiving dinner that we are going to provide these families. As Steve said, there's a lot of things that happen in our communities, a lot of going back and forth, but these days have shown that at the end of the day, we are community first and foremost. Everybody stepped up. A lot of great things happened. Lessons learned, we are not truly prepared. We are here to tell you we want to be part of help. Anytime you guys need us, we're there. We want to do what we can do. We can't do everything, but we are there for you guys, for our community, not just Rialto, but the entire San Bernardino Riverside County. You know, we've been with these families 24/7. We've been on the phones. We've assured them that they will not be alone. We are going to be here with them till they are back on their feet and continue after that. There was many small businesses impacted that lived in that, small business owners that lived in that complex. They've lost a lot of their tax records, keys, and I'm glad that we were there to let them know that the city's there, they saw the Red Cross, everyone there, that helped. They're going to start feeling the pain coming soon. They are in shock. As a burn survivor myself, and as a son, my father lost his life in the fire. I went back today to look at the apartments. And Congressman and Chief Jensen, the smell from the fire permeates all through that. I think I did speak with Donna Gonzalez with the CC AJ, and I said, you know, the air quality needs come test the air here because you couldn't smell it. So I can assure you that all that has gone into those other apartments that are there. There's kids playing in the same area. So I don't know if any of you have gotten a chance to go out there and actually stand away from where the buildings were caught fire and smell that. I went, and it was very traumatic for me because it triggered everything that's happened. So please go take a look at that. And as you start implementing your emergency response plan for incidents like this, because we are truly not ready. If the whole block had went down, especially with the winds, we know what could happen. So please count on us. We are there to support and help. We have been able to house all the families, all of them, for at least seven days. I think the funds that we put in run out December the 5th, but we are still collecting dollars, and we will be there. We'll find a way. We will find a way. But any assistance that the city can give, anyone, you know, the community out there, we need donations, cash donations. That's what's going to help. The community did step up with clothes, everything, the love that the community poured, Rialto did step up. So it was beautiful to see. But anything that you guys can assist us, assist us for the Thanksgiving lunch dinner that we are putting together, let us know. But our board members, our small businesses are stepping up, and one way or another, we are going to make this happen. So I just wanted to thank all of you. And Chief, thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Congressman, for all your help.
Thank you.
Next, we have Anna Gonzalez.
Good evening, Mayor Baca, council, and staff and community here and at home. Anna Gonzalez, I'm here representing the Center for Community Action and Environmental Justice, also a Rialto resident. So not going to reiterate what Frank just mentioned, but we are housing folks and the funds are running out. And so right now, I am here to ask you all to please declare a state of emergency, a local state of emergency. We have been looking at different laws, talking to different housing attorneys, and we have quickly found out that the city of Rialto has no tenant protections. And so it's becoming a little more difficult to really represent the tenants, the victims of this fire. And so I am here to plead that you act as your police power to protect the victims. The property owner had a meeting with the residents yesterday and basically said, here's your deposit, here's your prorater rent, we are done because the building is gone. And in fact, there's a lot of state laws that say otherwise. But right now, we need the city council to act to then protect the community and hold the landlord accountable for not housing these folks because really, the responsibility lands on the landlord. And so we ask you to please, please think about all the families that are struggling because if CC AJ would not have stepped in, Red Cross, trust me, was not going to cover their housing. They told us. And so we had to have an emergency board meeting to get the funding to house folks. Otherwise, they would be sleeping in their cars right now and/or in the streets. So we need action from this city council now. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments?
We have Peter. Is Peter here? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Protem, council. My name is Peter Denzmore. I'm with Canon Management. We're the management company that manages the property. We don't own it, we manage it. It's a great tragedy. It's a great tragedy. People lost their homes, all their possessions. I really believe that but for the grace of God and the heroics of the Fire Department, the Police Department, there would have been injury, if not loss of life. Sixteen units were affected. It's a hundred unit property. Without the, again, the heroics, there could have been a hundred units that were lost. As, as it stands, there's sixteen units. We're diligently trying to get alternate housing for these, for these people, our valued residents that have been impacted so dramatically. We're just overwhelmed that this happened, but on the, on the positive side, the response from the Fire Department, the Police Department, the city officials, I spoke with the Mayor Pro Tem on Sunday at the, at the, at the shelter. The Red Cross, all of the other agencies that, that were involved, it was, just was inspirational, and I, I don't know what we would have done without the help of all of those. I just wanted to say that to the Mayor, to the Mayor Pro Tem and the Council. So thank you for everything.
Any other comments?
Yes, you have a lot more. Claudia. Hola.
Is he, is he calling if I speak Spanish, or it has to be English?
Yes, we have Spanish.
English?
Si, tenemos alguien que puede hablar.
Buenas noches, mi nombre es Vladimir Reyes.
Good evening, my name is Vladimir Reyes.
Soy residente y vivía en el apartamento 102 en Rialto.
I was a resident of apartment 102 in Rialto.
Okay. Pues primero quisiera pedirles que hicieran una declaración, que declaren el estado de emergencia para nosotros obtener recursos y ayuda del alcalde y del concilio.
He says, he would like it if you could please declare an emergency so they can access resources, and he's asking for the Mayor and the Council for the support.
Ya que hoy fue el último día en que la Cruz Roja nos terminó de apoyar, ya creo que se acabó lo que es la comida y eso.
He believes today is the last day that the Red Cross will help, so the food has begun to stop.
Entonces quisiera que tomaran acción sobre nosotros para ayudarnos, ya que los dueños de los apartamentos no han podido darnos la cara.
He says, please take action because the owners of the apartments have not been able to face us.
No han mirado por nosotros, por nuestra familia, y porque estamos en la calle actualmente.
He says they're not looking out after them because they are actually in the streets. He says that's all.
Gerasia.
Rob, you can stay up there because everybody else is Spanish speaking. Vermeer Reyes. Not there. Vermeer Reyes. No.
Buenas noches.
Buenas noches.
Mi nombre es Claudia Laya. Nosotros somos del apartamento de Rialto, los que se incendiaron. Fuimos los que perdimos totalmente todo, quedamos en la calle. Y ahorita, los dueños del apartamento ayer nos dijeron que no nos van a ayudar, que quedamos totalmente en la calle, que ya todo lo que venga de hoy para adelante, que ya es responsabilidad de nosotros.
Good evening, we are residents of the apartments that burned down. We are in the streets. The owners of the apartments have told us to our face that the help is running out, and truly, we are in the streets.
Llevamos diez años viviendo ahí, en los apartamentos de Rialto, y la solución de ello fue entregarnos el depósito y darnos el contrato y decir que ya todo de para aquí ya corre por cuenta nuestra.
We've been residents for ten years, and the owners have given us back our deposits and told us that this is the end.
Entonces, lo que nosotros le pedimos a ustedes de corazón es que no nos den la espalda, que nos ayuden por lo menos, que nos den una esperanza de poder seguir viviendo independientemente, o sea, del estatus que tengamos acá. Yo creo que somos personas y merecemos respeto.
He's saying, they're asking from, from your hearts to face us, don't turn your back to us, to give us the resources and the access that we need so that we don't have to live on the streets.
Y pues, lo que ustedes pueden hacer por nosotros, se lo agradecemos de corazón, y pues estamos a la espera de lo que ustedes nos puedan colaborar. Muchas gracias.
We hope that we can collaborate, and whatever resources you can provide, we thank you.
Next.
Diane Poudaide.
Polito.
Polito. Elizabeth.
Hello, good evening to Mayor Baca and everyone else. I am just here to explain that we need your guys' help. We need you guys to be there for us. We went through something totally unexpected, something very difficult, and we are asking for you guys to make a declaration of emergency because we need housing and we need to protect our rights. We also ask of you guys to be, not turn our backs on us. We know, we chose you guys, you, Mr. Mayor Baca, as our mayor because we know you act. We know you know how to do something. We know you're capable of doing it. And we ask for all sixteen units that help, those resources, the ma, the management of the apartments just threw us out. Basically, they're not helping. They don't want to be responsible for the things happening, and we are here to ask for you guys to help us, for you guys to comprehend what we're going through. And we are just going through a really hard time, and we ask for what you guys can do for us, because today was the last day of the Red Cross helping us, feeding us, because the management of the apartments didn't want to be responsible for that. So we are asking you from our hearts to please help and take action for what is happening. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Doria Cortez.
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Dora Cortez. Yo vivía en los apartamentos en el número 109 de la Cactus, donde fue el incendio.
Good afternoon, my name is Dora Cortez. I live in apartment 109 from the fire on Cactus.
Este, pues yo solo le pido al Estado que por favor miren nuestra situación en la que estamos, que en un abrir y cerrar de ojos se nos acabó todo lo que es este trabajo de nuestro esfuerzo por años, y que en un momento parado ya no tenemos nada, y no hemos visto ningún apoyo de nadie más que pues lo que es los bomberos y eso que nos dan comida y eso, pero de techo no hemos ido nada, entonces les pido que por favor lo pongan de estado de emergencia para que nuestras familias, son dieciséis familias que quedamos sin techo, hijos y todo, y es horrible vivir esa situación.
There are sixteen families that have, are now living without a roof or a shelter. The help from the Red Cross is ending, and they are asking for your support on the local level for these families who have lost everything in a blink of an eye, all of the work that they have put in for many years.
Espero y que en nombre de toda nuestra familia que fuimos dieciséis, nos escuchen y miren nuestra situación, de todo corazón se los pido. Gracias por escucharme.
From my heart, I ask that you look at these sixteen families and that what we're asking from you, from my heart, we thank you.
Jose Rodai.
Good evening, everybody. I want to say thank you first, you know, thank you to this guy, Mr. Jensen, he did a chief, he did a huge favor for us. You guys probably heard that he recovered our son's ashes, my son that passed away, and that was something that we're going to have right here forever, you know? But I want to go forward, I want to thank the community too, soldiers, we're all, all those, we're feeling the hug from the community, but now we need the hug from legal, somebody up there that could talk, that could talk to them. We don't know what's, what's the next step. We're living at a hotel right now, and we're living in a bliss right now, you know? Like we have, we're a family of five, and like everybody else, yeah, it's materialistic things that come and go, but, but we also, in a period of time, we, we worked to get to where we're at, and we're just not ready to make that transition because we were paying a lot of residents, not just me, we're paying way under than what the rent rate is right now. So we just want like legal advice, if you guys could guide us, guide us through some legal advice, talk, talk to the owners, you know, because none of us had renters insurance. We don't know the cause yet, what caused it, because none of us, none of us left something plugged in, none of us, there's something misuse. I think that was maintenance misfailure, or, or you know, I can, I can say what was the cost of it either, you know, but we just want the, the help from you guys to talk, talk us through, to get some legal advice on that, because we're just, we don't know what's going to happen next. Thank you, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Meline Toya. That's how you pronounce that. Meline Moya.
Buenos dias, perdón, buenas noches. Mi nombre es Michaeli Moya, y también soy una de las, representando una, yo viví en los apartamentos 110, y me siento como un poco, un poco disappointed, porque tengo entendido que no hay ninguna ordenanza que nos proteja, que tengo entendido que no hay nada en caso, en caso de emergencia como este. Me siento como, qué, qué va a pasar con nosotros? Pienso que, por eso queremos entre todos pedirles por favor que declaren emergencia, un estado de emergencia, porque no hay ninguna ordenanza, que este incendio no fue culpa de ninguno de los tenants, fue culpa de un mal funcionamiento del edificio, y ahora nosotros estamos en la calle? Ay, perdón, esta traducción.
Good evening, I'm a resident of apartment 110. From what I understand, there is no help. They feel as though that there is no plan for an emergency like this, and they are asking that we declare a state of emergency to support the residents in their group.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I forgot, you need to translate. Yeah, I'm sorry, I speak English, but I'm very nervous and I cannot talk well, right? So, no hay ninguna ordenanza, lo que tengo entendido es que no hay ninguna ordenanza que haga que los propios owners respondan para nosotros, y eso me hace sentir muy decepcionada, y nos hace sentir en la incertidumbre.
My understanding is that there is no ordinance that protects the tenants where the property owners have to face their mistakes, and this is a misgiving. This is, something is wrong.
Porque el incendio no comenzó por culpa de ninguno de los tenants. Todo ese incendio comenzó en el ático.
So the fire started in the attic at no fault of the tenants.
Y ahora tenemos que, no hay ninguna respuesta, nos dijeron primero que nos iban a relocalizar.
So right now, there's no response? We were told we were going to be relocated?
Pero ahora, no. Tenemos que pagar la renta actual del mercado, que es mucho más alto. La mayoría de los que estábamos en este edificio teníamos más de diez años de vivir allí, con una renta más baja que el precio del mercado ahora.
They're being told now that they have to pay market value for the rent, whereas a lot of the residents had been there for ten years and not paying that market value.
Nuestro depósito fue bajo cuando entramos, y ahora para volver a rentar, se nos va a pedir un depósito más alto, una renta más alta.
Our deposit was low, and now to re-rent the same apartment, the deposit and the rent will both be higher.
Así que pedimos por favor que declaren estado de emergencia. Son dieciséis familias, eso significa que son ochenta personas que están en la calle, incluyendo adultos, niños, jóvenes.
We ask that you please declare a state of emergency. These sixteen families represent about eighty people, from young people to elders who need help.
Si no fuera por esta organización, que es con la que la verdad nos está ayudando, cuando llegaron los propios owners, a decirnos que aquí está tu terminación del contrato, no hay edificio, el edificio se quebró, se quemó.
So if it was not for the community organization group that helped us, when the property owner approached us and let us know that the contract was null and there was no more building?
Nos quedamos como desesperanzados.
We were left without hope.
Yeah. Así que por favor, necesitamos de su ayuda. Nosotros los elegimos a ustedes. Ustedes están aquí para nosotros.
We beg you that you are here for our help, that we need your help.
Todos ustedes van a tener esta semana una happy Thanksgiving en sus hogares felices.
This week, you're going to have a happy Thanksgiving in your homes.
Como lo tenían planeado.
How you had it planned.
Y nosotros qué?
What about us?
Sus navidades van a estar felices en sus casas.
Your Christmases will be happy in your homes.
Y nosotros qué?
And what about us?
Así que por favor, hagan algo, ayúdanos.
Please do something, please help us.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Our last speaker, Liz Gudino. Elizabeth Gudino.
Buenas noches, Alcalde Baca y Concilio. Mi nombre es Lizeth Gudiño, soy víctima del incendio. Estamos aquí para pedirle a usted que declaren un estado de emergencia local. local, Rialto no tiene protecciones para inquilinos, ustedes son nuestros representantes y deben de actuar para protegernos.
Good evening, mayor and council, my name is Elizabeth.
Lizeth.
Lizeth, sorry, and I'm a victim of the fires, so we ask you as our representatives to act on our behalf, we voted for you and we are now needing your protection.
Por favor, nosotros estamos sufriendo y los dueños de los apartamentos no se quieren hacer responsables.
We are suffering and the property owners do not want to be responsible.
Tenemos que depender en organizaciones para tener un hotel, si no fuera por ellos, ahorita estuviéramos en la calle con nuestros hijos, I have three, three kids, I have one baby.
We depend upon these organizations for a place to live, because without them I would be in the streets with my children.
Por favor, protéjanos y hagan algo.
Please protect us and do something.
Thank you so much.
If I may make a statement, I, I hope I can encourage, you know, our council to draft an urgency declaring a local state of emergency, we've heard from many of the individuals that are there, and, and hopefully our council can look at to see if we do qualify or not qualify to offer a state of emergency for many of the individuals, as we heard many of the individuals out here, it's always hard, you know, to hear a lot of these stories, but sometimes, you know, we hear the stories of individuals and we have to put ourselves in their place, what would it be if we were in that situation, or if we were about to go homelessness in the area, what impact would it have on our families, our individuals, and sometimes, you know, it's easy to say at the diocese since we're not facing that right now, but many other individuals are going through that, and I believe that we have a responsibility to all citizens of the city of Rialto, or all individuals who live in the city of Rialto, to try to find some form of remedy or a situation where we might be able to provide assistance, and I think looking at what may be available in, in reference to drafting a declaration of a local state of emergency if, if possible, and looking at if we qualify, and knowing that, that we've tried in that direction, and then looking at what other means we may be able to provide some form of assistance, of a coordinated effort to help many of these individuals, so they and their families will, will not be homeless in, in the future, or now too, as well as they're trying to go through this, the situation that they're at, and work with the landlord, or work with other individuals as well as to how we might be able to help those, that's just me speaking, I can't speak in behalf of anyone else, but it's just my personal feelings. Mayor Protem Scott?
Thank you. Chief Jensen, can you tell us what the current status is of Red Cross?
So the Red Cross Resource Center that remained open the last two days was providing food and other resources to the victims, that closed tonight at 7:00 PM, however, they have what they call casework, which is continuing to provide financial support as well as other resources to the victims.
So there is financial support from the Red Cross available?
Yes, sir.
And where do individuals go to get that assistance?
My understanding from the regional director is, is that all residents have opened a case with Red Cross, and they would be reporting to their Red Cross representative that did their casework for any resources that they might need.
And, and do we know how those resources are put out and what the timeframe is from for attaining those resources?
The resources, depending on what the resource is, would depend upon the time, I am checking with Red Cross to see if there's an opportunity to continue to provide food resources, and how that might happen here in the coming days.
Okay, and I, I know the management of the apartment complex are still here, I'm wondering if maybe they could come up and explain the process and what they're doing to assist their residents, because it seems like there's a couple different stories here.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, I don't want to diminish the impact to the, to the residents here, but I do want to clarify a few things I think the council should know, which is, one, we've been advised that by law, when there's a unit that is no longer habitable, that we are required by state law to refund the deposit and prorated rent for any amount that's paid that's no longer usable, that's why they're getting their, their deposits and, and rent back with a notice that says that their unit is gone and that the lease is terminated, by no means has the owner of the building or the management given up on these residents, as of tonight, it's my understanding that out of the 16 homes that were down to maybe two or three homes that have not been relocated at units, and that includes the owner of the apartment building that has other units in that building that were vacant, that has agreed to have these tenants move into the vacant units at the exact same rate, at the exact same deposit, he also has a few other properties nearby, and he's agreed to do the same thing at those properties, we've actually contacted other clients of Cannons and gotten the same arrangements from them, and the...
Are these at the same rents and the same deposits?
Yes, sir, I'd be happy to share our notes, we brought our notes, so I, I don't know how...
Well, we, we have people in the audience saying no, so I'm, I'm wondering why the disconnect?
I, I couldn't tell you, I can tell you, I can tell you that it's...
Do you have your spreadsheet? We have been talking, and it has been a little delayed.
Can you identify yourself?
I'm sorry, my name is Laura Green, I'm the regional supervisor for the property, I've dealt with fires before, but not to this extent, so it's a lot of work to try to house 16 apartments or re-helm, but today we were able to make a lot of progress, we are down to three units that we have not been able to place, we have offered all the other ones, and a lot of residents have accepted, we have even executed four contracts today, and it's the same rent amount. It, it has happened, I mean, I don't know what to tell you.
There, there are people here that are not residents, that are speaking for residents, and I think...
Yes.
No, you're not all residents.
Anna is not a resident.
So, excuse me, I, I don't think we should get into a debate, I think what the mayor Protem was just asking a question, and we're debating, because there is conflict of stories that are being said right now between the landlord and the residents that, that are in that area, and I think we, we, this isn't the place to try to solve it, but I think that we should assign someone to make sure that we look at all the facts and find out, you know, which individuals are being displaced, if we have three units that are not, how many other individuals are not getting the assistance that are there, so I'd encourage that, that we move on beyond this, but look at any concerns that we have, and I think that's what the mayor Protem is asking the question, because we're hearing different things, and as I stated, you know, that's, it's a different situation when you're out there and you're not getting the help that you think you should be receiving, and you don't know if you qualify or don't qualify, or what, you know.
So maybe can you meet with the individuals that are here tonight that have issues, that haven't been able to get into an apartment?
Of course.
We, we have other rooms in the city where you can meet and try to get this resolved tonight?
And when we say that we're down to three, that just means that there's three left, it doesn't mean we've given up on those three, so...
Well, it's not just a matter of, of not giving up, it's, the fact is that these individuals have to find a place to stay, that's part of the problem that's there right now, is that they don't have a place, and, and apparently there's, between the Red Cross and the assistance, there seems to be a, a lack of providing the kind of assistance that they need right now, and, and if it stops tonight at seven, you know, a guy says, wow, what am I gonna do tomorrow, you know, I, I'd hate to be in that situation, where I wouldn't know what to do if it came down to the next day.
So chief, will the Red Cross assist in any, let's say, conflicts between the owners and, and the tenants, is there a conflict resolution process?
Not with, not with the Red Cross, no.
Okay, so, Mr. Vale, do you have a suggestion how to resolve conflicts between our, the residents and, and the property owners?
I know the city contracts with a housing consultant that does try to mediate disputes.
Inland Fair Housing.
Correct, maybe they could offer their good offices to help resolve that dispute.
Okay, and my, my next question is, how much longer do they have hotel rooms, do we know?
I can answer that. Sunday.
Sunday's not very far away.
I think, you know, if you can, I think the mayor Protem suggested that we have plenty of rooms that are out here, if you can possibly go out here and look at how we might address that issue, but it still doesn't address the whole issue, and I think that's what we need to do, is to look at the whole issue and the impact it has on many of the families and children that are being impacted by it, and I'd like to see, and that's why I stated that hopefully my colleagues will, will look at the possibility of, of declaring, you know, a, a local state of emergency, but that's, and then finding out if we do qualify or not.
We certainly support anything that the city does that helps these residents, we're, we're trying, we're open to suggestions, we're open to criticism, but anything the city can do to help, you've been very helpful so far, just keep helping.
Mr. Vale, do you have a suggestion?
Not to make light of their situation, but the declaration of an emergency in and of itself isn't going to help these people, what they need is funding, and so unless there's funding from a non-governmental organization or a governmental organization that is willing to provide that, the declaration of an emergency isn't going to do anything for them.
Well, it may in terms of not just them, but in terms of the future too as well, if we ever have any kind of disasters, so if we begin that process, Mr. Attorney, it's good to be in that process to make sure that we're protected, not only now, but in the future too as well, whether they can get assistance or not, from federal, state, or others.
What is, what is the process for the city to provide some funding to, to assist with this?
All the fund, the city can, if it is approved by the council, establish a disaster relief fund, which the city can contribute its own general funds to, it can also publicize that and accept donations that would go into that fund from the public and other organizations.
Okay, what do we need to do tonight to do that?
We would have to add that item to the agenda as an item subsequent to the agenda, and then the council could give direction to the city manager to establish such a fund, create a budget for the fund, and authorize the staff to take such measures as necessary to have private businesses and individuals allow them to contribute to that fund, we'd also have to set up a claims process for people to submit requests for funding.
Okay, I would make a motion that we move forward with that process.
All right, we, we need a, a vote to add that item, and then we'll have to have a motion for exactly what we're...
I want to add the item.
Second.
And then city clerk will take a vote?
Yes, but can we read what that item is, that we're going to, I can put it on the agenda?
So this will be an item that's added subsequent to the preparation of the agenda, obviously this fire occurred after the posting of the agenda, the Brown Act does allow that to do that, us to do that on a four-fifths vote of the council, as I understand it, that item would be the creation of a disaster relief fund for the Vista View apartment residents who have been unhoused by this recent fire. And then once we vote to add it, then the council can give us direction on what they would like us to do with regard to that fund.
Then I motion to add the item.
Second it.
Who second it?
Mayor.
Okay, that's to add it, then you want to, then we need another motion?
First, we just need to vote to add it.
Let's vote on this item first.
Okay.
Roll call.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Mayor Baca?
Aye.
Councilmember Toya?
Aye.
Councilmember Carrisellis?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Scott?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay, that item has been added to the agenda, now you can entertain a motion to establish a disaster relief...
So I go back to my motion to establish a disaster relief fund that would also allow contributions from community to go into it, and that it be managed by the city of Rialto.
Very good, now all we need is, we have a second?
A motion and a second.
I just have a question, do we need to do a set amount out of like the general fund or any other?
If the city council intends to fund this, yes, we'll need an appropriation from the general fund in order to put city funds in there.
An initial request for an initial amount of funding would be helpful for us to at least establish the fund.
What do we think that would be?
I, I couldn't begin to estimate, obviously...
My, my suggestion, we start out with $100,000. Second it.
A what, how much?
Hundred thousand.
Hundred thousand.
Who made the second?
I did. The motion made by Mayor Protem Scott.
So 100,000 from the city general fund?
Correct. Right, from, for a disaster relief. Roll call.
Mayor Protem Scott?
Aye.
Mayor Baca?
Aye.
Councilmember Carrisellis?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Toya?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Okay, and a point, point of clarification, Madam City Manager, do you have a housing person or somebody that can manage this?
I would probably defer to community development, that's where we house a lot of our housing programs, we'll have to coordinate with finance in terms of establishing the fund and protocols for disbursement, my recommendation is that we bring back to council an additional item at the next meeting that kind of outlines what this program will look like.
And I would like to ask that the managers of the complex work with you, Christina, so that we can find out who's been placed, who hasn't been placed, what we need to do to get everybody placed in, into sufficient housing, and in the meantime, that we take care of any needs between now and that happening, because we're obviously in a holiday week starting tomorrow.
If I may add to that, since there's a tremendous need now, and, and some of these families will, will be homelessness after a while, is that we look at the probability, and, and I know that we're looking at establishing a criterion, coming back on, at the next meeting, but that next meeting won't be until December the 9th, I think a lot of these people right here need assistance now, so if we can look at somehow providing... so if we can look at somehow providing some immediate relief for those that we think or do qualify, would qualify under the kind of requirement that would come under the housing.
Yeah, so the initial funding amount gives us the authority, and we'll have to establish some sort of claim form for people to submit. But we'll work on that between now and the next city council meeting so that we can offer support as soon as possible. We can look at what we did back then as well, yeah.
And council, I would, if we could suggest that we also allow a refund in the event that apartment owners decide to issue a waiver or allow people to occupy rent-free or advance the rent, that they can reclaim that from the fund. Private industry will act much quicker than we can in this response.
And I just want to add that we established a city GoFundMe that's tied directly to the funds to make sure that the community knows where they're donating to, because a lot of times people take advantage of tragedies like this and open up all kinds of other GoFundMes. We want to make sure that our community knows that this is a city GoFundMe, and it's a fund that we are, have established.
And Frank, is your group taking care of the current housing? Yeah, sure.
So first, I can say that there's more families in need, because we're paying for the rooms. We know how many are there.
When does that, when does that end?
So, Mr. Protem, we can fund, continue to fund. If there could be a reimbursement, we can continue to fund them now, because if you get them an apartment, they have no clothes, no bedding, nothing. So you're just giving them, they might as well stay here. So we have those issues too. So since we've been working with them, we can continue to help them and work with you till you guys get this all set up. But at the end of the day, the only ones that have stepped up to help these victims have been CCAEJ and the Hispanic Coalition. So we would work with you. Our thing is just keep them housed, because the mental stress that's going to come.
We want to keep them housed, but my preference, the rest of the council can make the decision, would be for us to do direct pays.
Sure.
That's just a cleaner way for us to do it.
Whichever way you guys would like, but they're already there. We're putting them all under one hotel.
When does that end, on Sunday?
We've paid to the 5th. We will raise the funds, so we don't have to move on. Whatever you will need us to do.
Frank, I think what we're all saying here is that we really appreciate the Hispanic Coalition, or the Hispanic Small Business Coalition helping out. But we'd like to make sure that an accountability in terms of city funds is that it's a lot better that if we begin that process immediately, and it's documented in terms of who we're actually providing, even though we do appreciate, and we could always give you the reimbursement, but from a legal perspective, it's a lot better that if we're doing it directly.
They're staying at the areas now, and we were able to get a discount for them. So that's probably the best place to keep them, under one roof, Mr. Mayor and City Council. And you can speak to themselves. We still are helping them, because they can't take food in there, because there's not enough space, refrigerator space. So we have that issue. But we will continue to help feeding, to feed them every day, and just make sure that the mental health of these kids, the trauma, that's another thing that we are making sure that we deal with, so they're not moving from place to place. We, our priority is the families, period. Not the, not the people that own the property, because they have failed.
Well, I think that was our direction.
If I may suggest, I think if they're already staying there, then we'll look at, your tab ends on Sunday, you said.
Yeah.
We'll pick up the rest of the tab. From the get-go, that was, the first call I made was to the Eris family. And initially, that was, that was my first inclination. So I'm glad that they're there, and I'm glad that we'll be able to just pick up the tab after that. That way, your efforts and all the work that you have done are greatly appreciated, but we'll be able to probably take it off after that, if that's okay with the council.
Yeah, and Peter, if I could ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
Tomorrow morning, would you, you and your staff be able to meet with our staff to kind of tell them where everybody's at as far as being placed, what the situation is? And so we can work together and coordinate together to get people where they need to be and get them what they need?
Of course, absolutely.
Excellent.
Thank you very much, and thank you all for coming. And we really appreciate, as has been stated, everyone in the community that has stepped forward. We'd like to move on with the rest of the agenda, because we've got items on the agenda to still go forward with. So at this time, if there's no other comments under oral communications, we'd like to move on to the consent items. The consent items, any member of the council can pull any item if he or she wishes to. If not, do we have a motion to approve the consent item?
So moved.
Motion been made by Mayor Protem, Ed Scott, seconded by Councilmember Andy Colacetis. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppositions? Hearing none. Consent items are approved. We'll move on to the tap items on the agenda, and that's Tab 1.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Tab 1 this evening is a request for council to consider approving an MOU with the County of San Bernardino for the operation of the West End Navigation Center. Carrie Harmon with the county is here this evening to do a brief presentation on the item.
Good morning, Mayor, Councilmembers. Carrie Harmon, Director of Community Development and Housing. I'm here to provide an overview of a proposed MOU to advance the West End Navigation Center, and for the City of Rialto to consider participating in that agreement. I think we have a presentation. So the, just for an overview, the vision behind the West End Navigation Center is to provide a coordinated, centralized, supported homeless center that serves as a one-stop where somebody can receive sheltering, an array of service, including the large human services offered by the County of San Bernardino, and be quickly navigated into housing pathways that are most appropriate for them. So this can include behavioral health pathways, substance use support, and reduction pathways, and other pathways for people that might have less barriers. Another objective is to create one access point to avoid the duplication of services, to streamline assessment and placement. Right now, people have to walk in many doors to get the support they need, tell their story many different times to social service providers and housing providers just to get to a better place. We want to share data to improve outcomes, want to ensure that we're making data-driven decisions regarding our homeless population, our homeless response. And we want to maximize resource efficiencies. There is limited money available for capital development of shelters and supportive housing, and limited funding available to support operations. So we need to be strategic in how we build and operate shelters, so we can maximize our money. And then, as I noted before, the county has under its umbrella the largest arsenal of supportive services, and they need to be deployed in a targeted manner to help our homeless population, which is most in need of our services. So the key stakeholders and roles in this partnership is the county. The county will provide all of the funding for capital development. We will deploy our county's social services, which again range from behavioral health, probation, our transitional assistance, our homeless services. Cities would, and if you choose to be a participating city, would provide operational funding. We hope to integrate the Navigation Center with your existing city services and homeless response efforts, and to participate in regional collaboration. Fontana will service the whole city. The facility is located in the City of Fontana. And then we are in the process of securing a provider through a competitive process that will be the direct service provider. So the services, just to give you some insight of what that Navigation Center will consist of, is 24/7, 365-day services. It will include emergency shelter, which are meals, hygiene, case management, transportation, linkages to other systems of care. That would be 100 beds, 100 general beds, no matter what, you know, males, females, families. We'd also have 100 beds of recuperative care. That's medical oversight, medication management, wound care, assistance with daily living activities. Those are primarily folks stepping out of hospital beds who are homeless, also folks stepping out of maybe some behavioral health care. It would also include a sobering center, which is a medical monitoring, crisis intervention, substance use kind of front door for those that are intoxicated on the streets, who don't require a hold, like a 51-50 hold, but could walk into traffic, or could be a problem in front of businesses. It offers them a safe place to get sober. They don't have to agree to treatment. But our hope is to move them into a navigation bed or into treatment, so they can get off to better health. We would have a commercial kitchen that serves 600 meals a day. There would also be behavioral health linkages, discharge planning, and aftercare. The commercial kitchen would also serve as a job training program. The facility will be on a referral-only. There'll be a bed reservation system, transport using your existing outreach teams or law enforcement or other providers that you have linkages with. And there would be supports for pets and belongings. This would be a low barrier shelter, you could take your pet with you, and you could take a significant amount of your belongings. These are the annual investment rates by city. These rates are determined based on your size, the incidence of homeless, based on the point-in-time count, what existing resources you have in your city, if you already have shelters or other facilities to provide housing. So the low end is 200,000, and you'll see some smaller cities with smaller incidents of the 200,000. The maximum for outside of the county and the City of Fontana is, the highest amount is upwards of 300,000, and that's around Chocucamanga. The county is participating in operations at the tune of 475,000 a year. We will front-load that in the form of a $5 million capitalized operating reserve. City of Fontana is the host city, and also being very aggressive in their homeless response efforts, has agreed to step out at $1 million. Ontario, just to note, is only participating in years 1 to 3, because prior to us embarking on this effort, they were already had their own navigation center underway. They choose to have that as a city-only navigation center, so they weren't taking partners at that time. But they do want to be a supporter in a regional collaboration. So why is this a strong investment for the city? One, there's regional impact. It doesn't make sense for all of us to have a homeless shelter. In fact, it could be very costly. But we're creating regional infrastructure here in the forms of a brick-and-mortar facility that can serve, and our goal is to have it served throughout the years, and we're looking for an initial 10-year commitment. It's a cost-effective model for a cost of, you know, ranging from 200 to 300,000 a year. You get full access to a 206-bed shelter with comprehensive services. You will get guaranteed bed access and support in connecting your residents that need this help. It will improve public safety, because you will have a guaranteed space to direct folks that are unsheltered on the streets, particularly as they may impact your business communities or park facilities. There's comprehensive services, and ensuring that the services meet the needs of our homeless population, that this isn't just a bed and a meal, as was in commonly got maybe 15, 20 years ago, but this is really a place of restorative care, and about us doing different human services in an effort to get people where they need to be in a more comprehensive manner. It reduces constraint on city resources just by having, you know, reduced homelessness over the years. While there's a return-to-origin protocol, we really are embedding our Office of Homeless Service Teams, housing navigators. I've worked with the Chief of Homeless Services, Marcus Dillard, for over 10 years. We both came from U.S. Vets as outreach workers, moved into case management, and are now in other roles. But we have a strong commitment to navigating folks onto housing. And there's also a commitment to long-term stability, not just for the facility, but those cared for in the facility. So with that, I'm here to clarify any points of the MOU, answer any questions, and just let me know what you need from my end.
Question?
Good evening. Couple of questions. Do you know statistically what percentage of these individuals that would use this service have opioid issues versus other drugs?
So we know roughly 30% of our homeless population at any given time is using some array of substances. We also know from data from behavioral health that opiate usage has increased significantly over the last five to 10 years. We do see a reduction in usage as evidenced by our reduction in overdoses and hospital room treatment. Meth is still the drug of choice combined with alcohol, but opiates are, we do see opiate usage in our unsheltered population.
Okay. Mr. Vale, I have a question for you. Based on the opioid settlement money that we have coming, would it be appropriate to use any of that money for our participation in this?
I can't answer that question tonight. I'd have to see the program guidelines up close, and I'd have to compare it to the settlement language, which I don't have in front of me. But that would be an easy answer to get to.
If we decide to move forward with this, of which I am in favor of, I think it's about time we as communities started doing something. I would like to take a look at whether or not we could use any of that money to participate in this. It seems to me that would be a better use of that money and better spent.
We'll get an answer for the city manager and then to the rest of the council quickly for you.
Okay. And I did see that the county is participating in this program also?
Yes, we're providing the entire money for the capital development, which right now is penciled at 20 million, it'll probably go up a little.
Okay.
There's no contribution from the cities on that. We're also participating at 475,000 a year in the operating costs for 10 years.
And are there other facilities, there are other facilities in the pipeline? Is this one ahead of everybody, or where are the others at in this pipeline?
Great question. So Victorville stepped out ahead of all of us, and they got a home key project that's known as a Victorville Wellness Center. It's up and running, their best practice.
How long?
They've been running about 18 months now.
And are they having some success?
They are having some success. I've visited it many times, and it has a great feel to it. And they're really taking the hardest to serve there. That one's run by Simba Center. The West End Navigation Center, which is before you tonight, would be the second one, and it would be the first county one. And I think it would be a best-practice model, and I'm very confident that over time, we will secure additional private and public money to reduce the city's cost burden, because I think it's going to be a great facility and a model. San Bernardino is looking to mirror this in their navigation center that's under construction or going into construction shortly with some other cities, but it's a little bit of a smaller collaboration.
Okay, great, thank you.
Are there any other questions for members of the council? If not, I have a couple of questions that I'd like to ask in reference to the regional centers. I think eventually, I think we're going to need a regional center, a navigation center, should I say, in terms of the future. I've just got a couple of questions in reference to duplication of services. We currently have SWAG that does a lot of the same thing that you're proposing that's going to be done under the navigation centers. Maybe I could ask somebody who represents or can speak in behalf of SWAG, the services that we're providing, and then also, I'd like to ask, the bottom question is, when does that contract expire? Because I'm looking at duplicated services, and when the expiration versus when you're asking us to start, you know, next year, giving 100, oh, 250,000 for seven beds? Can somebody answer from?
I can, well, I can provide just a little bit of context, having worked with SWAG, and then I'll let your staff member provide some additional details. I think SWAG is a compliment. While seven beds is the minimum, there's certainly enough capacity that if you need more, we could provide more, and I think we could work in tandem.
But you're not going to charge us more, are you?
No, not going to charge.
Well, according to the contract I read, it's based on, you know, 250,007 beds. And, you know, no one else will be taken in, or could be taken in. And so I'm looking at how many bodies or people that we may need to refer. And then if we don't, they don't have a referral, they can't get in, because they can't get in because that's part of the criteria too, as well as I looked at it, but.
Yeah. There's the recuperative beds that are an additional 100 beds that might house some of yours, but.
Hello, Mayor. Mayor Protemet, Council. I'm your police chief. And as far as the duplication of services with SWAG, there's going to probably be some overlap just because what SWAG does is finds folks in need and then they actually have placement. I think the differences in what SWAG would be doing compared to what the navigation center could be doing would be offering the seven beds in those different criterias, including offering medical. So depending on how you look at it, alleviating ARMC of some of these necessities could be actually handled out of the navigation center from what my understanding is. So I hope that answers your questions.
Well, in our contract, when does our contract end with SWAG? Because if we're talking about duplicated services, you know, this is a good concept and, you know, I just want to know when our contract expires and then when we can, you know, because we're asking, they're asking for 250,000 and then we're, and that's a 10-year commitment that we're giving. So it's not like we're just giving 250,000 for one year, with the exception of Ontario that's, it can buy out in three years.
So Mayor, SWAG is an annual contract that we bring you.
It's done annually?
It's annual, yes.
Yes.
Chief, one last question for you, the chief.
Yes, sir.
I assume you see this as a kind of a compliment to what SWAG does because some of the stuff they have, we don't do or they don't do, and this would be in addition to what SWAG is already doing, correct?
That's correct, sir. And just to, just be very blunt with council, the concern that I've always had is actually losing SWAG services in addition to what the navigation center is going to be doing. As long as the city would continue down the path it's doing, because for us, it works successful with the homeless here. I mean, you've only had to look at our numbers. I think we were at 52 this last year in a city real to our size. So I wouldn't want to lose SWAG.
No, and we don't, we don't want to lose SWAG. SWAG does a great job and there's certainly a lot more than seven people out there in our community that are homeless. And as we both know, a lot of people are migrating from other areas into the city. They may not stay here permanently, but they do migrate into the city. So I think SWAG is a necessity for the city, but I see this as a more comprehensive program that can really help some people.
Councilmember Montoya?
Yes, sir. Excuse me, yes, sir. I want to kind of piggyback off what, something you said. You had asked if we were going to be charged additionally for after seven beds. You said no, but upon reading the MOU, I knew I seen it earlier, there is an additional charge. So are we going to reconstruct the MOU to say that we are not going to be charged for additional beds?
So to clarify, there's 100 beds that are general beds. Those are for folks that don't fit into a recuperative care or sobering definition. If you refer somebody into recuperative care or sobering, that doesn't count against your seven beds. So theoretically, you could serve more than seven folks at a given time without having a cost because you bear no cost for anybody that might be in a sobering bed or a recuperative care bed. Those income streams are generated from CalAim and Medi-Cal buildings.
Yeah, because, but it also states on here, as I'm reading it on page three of our thing, it actually states on here, you know, what the cost would be to estimate it'd be 3 million. And then it also states that our cost would be 250, which would guarantee us seven beds. And then it says, any additional beds we purchase, the rate would be $125 per night. Is that right?
That is correct if you wanted to buy permanently additional beds. But our goal is to keep that shelter full.
No, I'm just trying to compare. If I went to a Motel 6, what that would cost me versus staying there, you know?
Right. That's a fair question. This is what you, having run Project Room Key, this is what you get that's a little above a motel placement. You get security. You get onsite services, including medical. You get pathways, like if somebody's justice involved or behavioral health, you get immediate access to those housing pathways and supports.
And what would be your policy then if an individual was referred to the navigation center and then the next day they decided to leave? What happens then?
We would try to arrange a different placement for them. So if, for whatever reason, they don't like some aspect of the navigation center, our goal is always not to return somebody to the street and not to have to return somebody to the city of origin. I think there's a lot of interventions we can deploy so that people, you know, you don't like this bigger facility, maybe we'll try a smaller one.
And how much staff then would be dedicated to this navigation center to make sure that we provide services? Because we're incorporating quite a few cities and then each city is guaranteed so many beds.
Another great question. So we're in our final round. We're doing in-person interviews to select the provider. So some of the staffing ratios are in discussion and are being recommended by the providers in their proposals. We see this particularly with the insertion of the commercial kitchen and the sobering center as being more staff-heavy. So we see it running about 50 staff members of varying levels of credentials. And we also see deploying county resources. And what that looks like is a behavioral health specialist or clinician from the county, their everyday work site would be the navigation center at no cost to the public because we were paying them perhaps to work at a clinic or a behavior, other behavioral healthcare building.
How would you then also handle if the case happened that someone filed a lawsuit? What impact then would it have on our city? If someone would file a lawsuit, will we be tied into that lawsuit? Or would that be separate based on that city that that individual is coming from? Or is that directly that the navigation center will handle it without any liability to us?
We've tried to, with support from our council and the council, our legal counsel drove that portion of the MOU, provide strong indemnification language. So the city's only responsibility is financial contributions. You know, that could be something we'd want to discuss more with your council and our council.
I hope so because that's where I read it on page nine, paragraph six of 26.
I believe we've added a lot of indemnification language to protect you legally, but I don't want to offer a legal opinion out here. And if there's some concerns about some specific verbiage, we can meet with your council.
Yeah, I think we're, you know, we would be concerned to make sure that, you know, there isn't any. Mr. Vale, have you looked at it? Eric?
My assistant city attorney did. If the council feels that it's not protective enough, we can certainly revisit it.
No, we're not saying the council. We're looking at what you guys are looking at to protect us.
Yeah, what is, what is your council's feeling on it?
We thought it was a reasonable provision.
Okay. And I assume you're going to be self-insured through one of those JPAs?
Yes, we would be self-insured in addition. We would ensure our provider has adequate insurance, more than adequate insurance.
And Mr. Vale, is there a clause to get out of this in the event that it doesn't work?
You mean a termination for convenience clause?
Yeah.
I'd have to go back and look at the agreement.
Do you know that?
There is not a termination for convenience. There's actually a buyout structure.
So what is it based on, the amount of years left?
Yes.
Is it total, total price?
Total price.
Okay.
What about, you know, if we have anyone that's there that has children or going to school outside of Fontana, how is that going to be handled?
We would offer support back to the school of origin. That's part of McKinney-Vento. And we've, I've done that at other shelters. We've set up systems to ensure the kiddos go to school, where they start at school.
No further questions. What is the members of the council?
Move approval.
Second. Motion's been made by Mayor Protemet Scott, seconded by Councilmember Edward Montoya.
Roll call.
Mayor Protemet Scott?
Aye.
Councilmember Montoya?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Andy Carasales?
Aye.
Mayor Barker?
Aye, with some reservations. Aye.
Thank you.
The next item is?
Yes, tab two will be presented by Yaz, our new public works director.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protemet, members of city council. Yaz Amrani, Republic Works Director, here to present on the award of a contract, recommendation by staff to order a construction contract to Zico Incorporated in the amount of $343,165 for Ferguson Park resurfacing project. This project is served as a recreational facility for residents and this project will provide additional.
Move for approval.
Second. Motion's been made by Councilmember Andy Cotticidis, seconded by Mayor Protemet Scott. Any further discussion?
Yaz, we're giving you an easy one tonight.
Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. Item number three.
Good evening, Mayor and city council. We do have a new utilities director with us this evening, Sasha. It looks like he just stepped out there. He is. But I did offer to present this item for him since it's his first city council meeting. So tab three is a request for the city council in Rua to amend the contract with DePujin Wells in the amount of $647,365. Further, there's a request to approve a sole source professional agreement with, forgive me if I mispronounce this, but Shival Engineering for the Rialto Habitat Nature Center project in the amount of not to exceed 100.
Move for approval.
Motion been made by Andy Cotticidis, seconded by me, Dan.
By who?
Seconded by who? Oh, you did second.
Did you hear me?
No.
I did.
Okay, seconded by Ed Scott, Mayor Protemet Scott. Do you, okay, do you need to read the resolution number or not?
Yes, I would prefer that the motion, the person with the motion read the resolution for me, please.
Resolution number 8435 and Rua Resolution Number 08-48.
Thank you.
Okay, it's been, motion's been made. It's been seconded and, you know, somebody got off easy here and let the city manager, you know, make that. You know, we should have let you do that. You would have got off real easy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
It won't be that way next time.
Okay, motion carries. Item number four.
Tab four will be presented by Chief Kling. Oh, there he is. Okay, he's hiding.
Hey, there's a lot of zeros on this one.
There is, sir. You know, it's been a tough night and I'm going to use something from the Avila family, and that's imagine. I think that was an interesting, actually, statement that that family made. And I just kind of want to, when I get into tab four, I'm going to need about 12 to 15 minutes of your time. And I want you to understand exactly.
I think move approval. Motion's been made by the mayor, seconded by Carla Perez.
I think this entire council supports it. Any kind of gadgets you bring to the table.
And seconded by Carla.
I know you insist to approve this, but would you like to see what you've just approved?
No, we've read it.
No, let's see it.
So actually, I have two representatives from Axon's here and also Skydio. So I'm going to go to the, this is actually the.
Show us the one when you pulled Carasales over last week for speeding.
Okay, so even though this is a well-done video by Axon, this is what you're purchasing in addition to another 22 items that are going to coincide with this. I think that this is going to set Rialto on a path of not only improving community safety, but also ensuring that this is a really, really safe community for development that's going to come in here at residents and businesses. Then this is the future of your PD.
Right, and it's actually stated in the program itself as it states that this advancement's created through our full unified system that includes department's operations effectiveness. Enhance the office.
Suspected hit-and-run victim is injured, but in stable condition.
Hey, my name is Officer Beckwith. I'm here to help, okay? I put a translate. Did you see the car that hit you?
Yes, a red Mustang was in this. Moved and made a right.
Suspected hit-and-run driver heading southbound on Bear Parkway in a red Ford Mustang.
Plate number 285, Victor Hotel Echo Uniform, last seen traveling westbound on Spring Street. Captain, suspect has a parole violation. 109 is nearby.
Okay, let him know.
Yes, sir.
Call 109 to dispatch.
I have that red hit-and-run Mustang headed west on Spring Street.
How you doing, sir? I need to see your driver's license, please. Anything I can help you with, sir? What we got? Sir, need to put that back.
911, this is Michael Harris with Secure Solutions Global Security Operations Center. We are currently witnessing a crime in progress at our store location at 1201 North Wilmington. The crime appears to be a robbery in progress.
This is a stolen vehicle.
Let's get a drone out there.
Suspect car located, heading north on Columbus. Suspect fleeing on foot.
Officer arriving on location. Vehicle's empty. Do we have eyes on suspect?
Suspect is fleeing on the east side of the building.
Officer in pursuit of suspect.
Suspect has turned left down the alley.
Suspect has turned left down the alley.
Stop, police! Get on the ground! Get on the ground! Put your hands down! Stop where you are! Taser, taser, taser!
Suspect down. Taser deployed.
We have an unauthorized drone approaching the stadium downtown from the south. Concert in progress. It's a recreational aircraft.
Pilot location, car twenty-four dispatched.
We're good. Hey.
Just wrapping up this report.
I think we got it. Good job.
So, council, basically transforming public safety here in Rialto is what you just saw. In addition to what we already have through Axon Enterprises, we're gonna add another fourteen different components, including live video feed. So what you saw in this foot pursuit is basically gonna give our watch commanders an opportunity to be able to watch that in real time, including pursuits and anything else. Our goal is to actually limit liability to the city if needed, where supervisors that are completely detached from the situation can look and view in real time to see if there's a need to shut things down and slow things down. In addition to that, AI introducing, or introduction with report writing, that's all CGS compliant, the partnership with Axon just keeps going. And if you recall, we were the first agency in the U.S. that actually put cameras on our officers. I think we've kind of fell behind the curve a little bit on just the technology with what Axon has come out with. This is gonna put us in, literally in line with agencies like Santa Ana, or Huntington Beach, or Ontario. And the question was asked of me, well, why, you know, how can you do this in Rialto? In your staff report, I do wanna thank the finance department for working with us. I also wanna compliment the council on having the foresight to do development agreements, because when this is all said and done, even though it's a little over fourteen million over the next nine, you know, next decade, there literally is minimal increase to our general fund allocations that we would've been asking for. The table for that is in your staff report, and I would just like to go on record to say that we're asking you to adopt Resolution Number eighty-four thirty-six that amends the 2025-26 fiscal year budget, approve the nine-year agreement with Axon Enterprises in the amount of fourteen million, three hundred and forty-six thousand, four hundred and ninety-seven dollars to purchase the Axon Officer Safety Plan X, commonly referred to as the OSP ten, which includes conductive imagery weapons, body-worn camera systems enhancements, digital evidence management, virtual reality training, drone programs, and advanced software, and then authorize a city manager designated to execute the documents. I also want you to know that everything that we have planned in this brand-new police facility, including virtual reality training rooms, our range, all the real-time crime center which you just witnessed, those are, this is going to be in addition to. We're not gonna have to come back and ask council for additional. Although I do wanna go on record with this council to say, the network of cameras, working with public works, businesses, the FUSIS system that we already have in play, is just going to expand. And I think when we look at the possibilities of what this police department, through your guidance and direction, is providing the citizens here and businesses, there's really not a tough decision here, even though you've made a ton of tough decisions tonight. And I can answer any questions that you have, or Lauren Gower from Axon, or Chris Morton from Skydio, which is a drone, and they are U.S.-made drones.
Well, thank you very much for your presentation, but I think we made the motion to approve it, and we know that it's a state-of-the-art equipment that we need. I think it's, it looks good for the city of Rialto, because we're progressing in terms of the technology that is gonna be needed, not only now, but in the future, to make our cities and keep them a lot safe. So, thank you very much for looking forward, not looking at what we have today, but what we also need in the future too as well.
Thank you, Mayor.
Andy, you wanna...
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to ask the question of how accessible and affordable will the units for the small business community and for the businesses that are here in our city?
So, that was one of the questions that I had. And, you know, Axon is a very supportive company, so let me get Lauren up. And just so this, we under, my understanding of this is that Axon is actually looking at monitoring. So, the way those cameras would work in businesses, which I think is a fantastic idea, but it also puts, it literally sets, I think, the whole entire technology ability for our businesses here, for real-time video that actually then gets fed into the PD, so we can take a look at that. So, let me get Lauren up here and answer that question.
Good evening. Yes, so a part of Axon, we have our enterprise division, and basically their role at the company is to work with local businesses, even large retailers, to, you know, employ, deploy the Axon Workforce Cameras, and then from there, also kind of their own instance of FUSIS that the, obviously, the department has today, that then can be, you know, ultimately shared for those streams to the police department and the city if they so choose. So, there's a couple different ways that they can kinda go about that. They can go through that with our enterprise side of our business. They can also go online and purchase those as well.
Great, thank you. I look forward to the incorporation of our business community as well. Thank you.
Absolutely.
And just so you know, council member, you know, we changed the name of our community engage, our community team to Community Engagement Team now. And again, there's just a comprehensive approach to what we're doing. So, our team members would be out with our businesses, with Business Watch programs that we're bringing back to actually sell this idea, and then put them in play with Axon.
Thank you very much. We have a motion to approve Resolution eighty-four thirty-six and amending the twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal budget to approve the multi-year agreement with Axon Enterprise. Motion's been made, and it's been seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye. 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 Okay. Thank you. Motion carries. Thank you. That concludes the items on the agenda. The next items we'll move into is council reports. Let's start with Kena Salis, Councilmember Andy Kena Salis.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to wish all the families of Rialto a happy Thanksgiving, and especially, I want everybody to keep in mind the families that have been displaced here in the city of Rialto. On our side, we are going to do, we already took action today to really step up and help these families, but I look forward to also connecting with our business community. I look forward to connecting with all the leaders in this community and really help grow that GoFundMe, so that we can really have enough money there to get these people as much time as needed to move them back into a home. And I just wanna pray for the families, and I wish everybody a happy holiday and a very Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Next, I'd like to call in Mayor Protam Ed Scott.
Thank you. I did what Councilmember Carasales had to say, but I also wanna wish the employees of the city of Rialto a happy Thanksgiving. We appreciate everything you do, each and every one of you, so happy Thanksgiving to you. And Mr. Jensen, or Chief Jensen, I hope one thing we get out of this tragedy this last weekend is that we probably need to expand our inspections of apartments to not only include the inside of apartments, but the actual structures and attics and stuff to make sure that everything is properly done.
Yes, sir.
Does that make some sense?
Okay, next, Councilmember Carla Perez.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to echo what my colleagues here mentioned, you know, keeping our thoughts and prayers with the families that were affected by the fire on Friday, and, you know, wishing our community a happy and safe Thanksgiving. There's a lot of people already on the road. Please be safe out there. You know, there's traffic. Please don't drink and drive. I know that, you know, we are out there celebrating, but just be mindful. And then, on a lighter note, I'd like to wish my husband a happy birthday. We just celebrated his birthday on Sunday. So, since I wish my kids a happy birthday, I can leave him out.
Councilmember Edward Montoya?
Yeah, I'm gonna say happy Thanksgiving to everybody, just as everybody else did. Happy Thanksgiving. Hope you have a great turkey day. And if you smoke your turkey, that's really awesome. It tastes great. But I want to mention to the victims of the fire, I'm getting reached out a whole lot by churches and businesses from around the area, hot meals, care packages. I would like to get those somewhere. So, if somebody could reach out to me, and I can get some names of everybody at the hotels, or wherever they wanna pick it up. But I had somebody text me a little bit ago wanting to donate eighty hot meals from a church, but we had nowhere to get it to. So, if you just get to me, let me know, and we can get all that stuff to you. I would really like to get you guys something. We did a whole, or I did a whole lot this past month. We haven't met in a month, so I'm gonna just sum it up. I'm not gonna go through everything. I did a whole, I did a few trunk-or-treats. I read to four different elementary schools, five different veteran resource fairs from San Bernardino, city of San Bernardino, county of San Bernardino, San Bernardino Valley College, city of Rialto, Rancho, and the Federal Correctional Center. I was all over the place. I attended the Rialto PD Pride Platoon graduation, so congratulations to all those, all those youth, and, and thank you all the staff for all your hard work that you guys put in. It's really awesome to see the pride on all of their faces when they were graduating. That was really awesome. And that's about it. Thank you all.
Well, thank you very much for not going through everything that you said you were gonna go through, but you did. But that's okay, thank you, because that shows your involvement in the community, and you care about the community. That's why I made that statement. Next, I'd like to just report that I think, like everybody else, I attended the Rialto Unified School District Dia de los Muertos that was held, and then also the trunk-or-treat that was sponsored by our city. Thank you very much, Barbara McGee, for putting that on along with the city. I think it was well-attended. Not as much as we normally have had in the past because of the ice, so some people stood back home and didn't participate as much as they would've liked to. I also attended the Yolga Land Grand Opening. We now have a new business that opened up in the city of Rialto, at Rialto City Market in your, down south. Oh, in that area.
Good.
So... And attended also an event that was sponsored by, and hosted by, Rialto Unified School District. I've never stopped grinding for individuals that have learned boxing and completed their training. During that time, there was a lot of parents that attended that, along with the Never Stop Grinding staff that went to a multitude of variety of schools without, within the Rialto Unified School District. And once again, you know, I also wanna mention the Pride Platoon. I'd like to thank CJ Nelson, who really has spearheaded that for some time, and originally started by the chief, Chief Mark Kling, that originally started the program some time ago. So, we had a professional boxer that was there that gave an excellent speech in terms of never give up, you know, and if you get knocked down, stand up as well. So, and I wanna congratulate all of the students that went through the training program and completed it, and I think it's changed their lives too as well, and motivating them in terms of possible encouragement in what they may do with their life later on. So, the Pride Platoon has done an excellent job, and all of the staff and people that were involved with the Pride Platoon program, I wanna compliment that as well, because it doesn't just take the individuals that I mentioned, it took the whole staff and all of the other officers that were involved with it too as well. I wanna thank them too. Also attended a veterans event sponsored by the Latino Peace Officers Association here in the city of Rialto. And then, not last but not least, I also wanna say, you know, I wanna encourage and I wanna thank my colleagues here in the city council for stepping up and helping the residents or individuals from the Vista View Apartments. I commend you all for willing to take a stand, and then also to put money aside through the Emergency Relief Fund that will be established to help many of these individuals that will be homeless. With that, I'd just like to say happy Thanksgiving to everyone out there. May you have a safe and a good Thanksgiving. And last but not least, I wanna wish my wife a happy anniversary, because we celebrate it fifty-seven years on Sunday. And that concludes my report.
Would that, I'd like to move on to our city clerk, Barbara McGee.
Well, I'd like to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, and also wanna thank NSG for partnering with me. Last Wednesday, we gave out over six hundred turkeys, so I wanna say thanks to, yes, thanks to NSG for doing that. Yes, and I have farmer's markets open tomorrow, and also giving twenty-five dollar coupons to Rialto residents to come out and shop tomorrow.
Can I stop?
Sure. Love to see you.
And I'd like to thank the city clerk too as well, because she has donated oranges that will actually be going to some of these victims that I will be picking up and distributing to them on Thursday. So, thank you very much. I'm picking up tomorrow, but delivering them on, you know, on Thursday. But thank you. Next, I'd like to call Antonio Williams, our city manager.
Good evening. I just would like to echo everyone this evening, and just wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, city council, and then our dedicated staff here at the city as well.
Thank you. And next, our city attorney, Eric Vale.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd echo everybody's sentiments, especially a night of the tragedy that's occurred in the city. It's a good time for us to remember what we're thankful for and give back to others, and we appreciate being part of the city. Thank you.
Next, our police chief, Mark Kling.
Mayor, Mayor Protam, and council. First of all, I'd just like to recognize and also thank Chief Jensen and the Fire Department for what they did the other day. I know that, I can only imagine what it would be like to get into a building that's on fire, but just the professionalism that they exhibit, I think just needs not to be overstated, just to recognize. So, thank you, chief. Did a great job, especially from a leadership standpoint. I also want council to know that furniture is starting to go in at the new building, which I think is pretty exciting for us. So, cubicles are being built, pavement for the back lot is supposed to go down in early December, and I know that council's excited and wanting to go through the facility, which I will coordinate probably in early January, once it gets all cleaned up. So, I know, I've heard your request, and we'll get you in there. And then mainly, thank you, council, and thank you for what you do for the department and the city. It just goes without saying, but sometimes you need to hear it. And we're very grateful to you, and happy Thanksgiving to you and your families. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, the fire chief, Chris Jensen. Do you wanna add anything else?
I just wanna wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, and appreciate all of the comments tonight, and it does remind us what to be thankful for. So, I appreciate that. tonight, and it does remind us what to be thankful for, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Next, we have our public works director, relatively new, if you'd like to make any kind of statement, Yassam Rambani.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving and happy holidays. Thank you.
Thanks. Next, we have our community development director, Christina Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing to report this evening.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have our Parks Recreation Director, Cynthia Alvarado Crawford.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and members of the council. Here's what's going on in Rialto. Tiny Talks December registration will close this Friday, November 28th at 6:00 PM. Turkey Burn, which is a free exercise class that will be happening at the Fitness Center on Saturday, November 29th, from 9:00 to 11:30 AM, will be free to the public. We encourage those who want to participate to bring in a canned good or a pair of socks so that we can donate it to an organization in need. Our volleyball winter season registration will open Monday, December 1st at 7:00 AM, both online and in person. And the Rialto Holiday Festival and Parade will be Saturday, December 6th, at Rialto Civic Center from 5:30 to 9:30. Our youth basketball winter season registration will open up the week of December 8th through the 11th here at the Carl Johnson Center Gym from 6 to 8:00 PM. All registration will be in-person only. The senior center will be hosting a Charlie Brown Christmas Senior Social on Thursday, December 11th, at the Grace Vargas Senior Center from 2:00 to 4:00 PM. And the toy drive at Rialto Certified Farmer's Market will be happening Wednesday, December 17th until supply is last. And from my family to all of yours, happy Thanksgiving, and thank you, council, for your leadership tonight. It was really, I'm proud to be a part of the Rialto team, so thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have our finance director, Scott William.
No report, just happy Thanksgiving as well.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have our human resources, Shama Kirian.
Thank you. Nothing to report, sir.
Next, we have our new utilities director, Shashin.
Mayor Baca and the council, very excited to be here. Thank you, Tanya, and Mayor Protem, for, you know, during the interview process. I came to the first council meeting here in 2008 as a service provider, and now excited to serve the ratepayers directly and work with all the staff here and the council to keep the utility moving forward.
Welcome aboard. Thank you, and welcome aboard, both of you, and we look forward to working with each and every one of you. That concludes the items on the agenda. Do I hear a motion to adjourn? Motion's been made by Mayor Protem Ed Scott, seconded by Carla Perez. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposition? Hearing none. Council's adjourned.